Right. I think we're all set.
All right. So, are you gonna go over the?
Yeah. Before we get going on the meeting tonight, the Planning and Building Commission meeting tonight, September 8th, I just want to note that we have two public hearings tonight. Folks who are interested in participating in these hearings will need to raise their hand in order to be recognized by the chairman. At that point, you will be unmuted if you want to address the commission. You can also address the commission later on in the agenda under Public Communications using the same method. If you're on a laptop or on a Mac or an iPad, there's a little hand signal. If you're calling in by phone, you can hit star nine and that raises your hand and we can unmute you from there.
Okay. So we have a roll call. It looks like Barbara Tarbox and Steve Hodacheck are not present. So I'll sit Kevin to sit for Barbara. Tonight, so we have a quorum. First item on the agenda is public hearings. We have a spec 371 Sandy Hollow Professional Offices. Would you read the legal ad for that, Hal?
Okay. Notices hereby given. The following public hearing will be held on September 8th, 2020 at 7:00 PM virtually via Zoom platform to hear the following. Number one zoning regulation amendment number REG 820, tax 01 zoning regulation text amendments to section 5.1 dash E. Point E, outdoor patio commercial to extend the time for outdoor patios under approved under temporary certificate of outdoor dining TCOD established pursuant to 2020 CT executive order 7MM townwide application town of Groton Office of Planning and Development applicant and special permit number 371.
Why don't we read that one separately when we get to that public hearing?
Excuse me, that's the one that's first on the agenda is the special permit.
Oh, that's right. Okay, go ahead.
That's right, so we're in order here. Special permit number 371, 200 Sandy Hollow Road. P I N 261909162611. RS dash 20 zone to change one nonconforming use medical office to another nonconforming use professional office. Review is per sections 3.2 dash 2.2, 2 dash B, 4.1, 5.1, 9.4, and 9.7 dash 4B. Of the zoning regulations. Garvey, Steele, and bankrupt limited liability. Applicant mystic professional associates owner. A Zoom meeting link will be posted to the town's website, meeting calendar, or can be attended by visiting www.zoom.us. The webinar ID is 871-2992-4092. The passcode is 778876 or by phone 13126266799. Applications are on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours at the planning department 134 Groton Long Point Road dated this 28th day of August 2020 at Groton, Connecticut.
Okay. So on our public hearing, our processes to hear from the applicant, presentation by staff, open it to the public for any comments or questions and then to commission members and repeat the process again for responding to any open issues. Until they're all well addressed and then we close the hearing and no further input can be used to make our decision. So is the applicant, is that Michael Franklin?
No, Michael Garvey.
Or Garvey?
Yes.
If you would like, I didn't see your name on the heading.
Of course.
Hmm?
Yes.
Now, yeah.
Okay, excellent.
So if you'd like to make your presentation.
Apparently, so our desire is to change the special zoning from medical only to professional office and medical. We'd like to locate our certified public accounting practice in the upper area of the building. We'll continue to lease the lower level to Thames Eye Group. We feel that the usage is actually an improvement to the neighborhood because it should not be as busy as a, as the vibrant medical practice was beforehand with multiple doctors seeing multiple patients every day. Our busiest time of year is the tax time, so there'll be some traffic at that point. But the rest of the year, it's typically relatively quiet as far as clients coming to our location. So we feel it'll be an improvement to the use of the property, much less invasive to the neighborhood. You know, we're pretty, we're pretty quiet neighbors. We just sit in our office and work, so. I think that's the best way to state it.
Okay. Staff, do you have any input?
Sure, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Bruce Lofgren from the Office of Planning and Development Services. Like Mr. Garvey said, this has been a a nonconforming professional office in that building since 1965. It's always been a medical office. And the old regulations as by medical offices as in the same category as professional offices, new zoning regulations as of 2019 do not. They separate them out between in different uses in the table of use regulations. So because of that, it's, it's going from one nonconforming use to another nonconforming. The site is located in RS 20 zoning district. It's surrounded by RS 20 zoning, except for the north where there is I-95 and RU 20 building. Site over the years received a few variances for small footprint expansions, small parking lot expansion, but other than that, it's pretty much remained the same. Um, like I said, the switch from one nonconforming use to another nonconforming use requires a special permit. That's from section 9.7 dash 4. E. Uh, so the purpose of this section is zoning regulations is to have the commission determine whether or not the proposed nonconforming use is more or less intense or in conformance with the surrounding neighborhood than the existing use. And in this case, I would agree with Mr. Garvey that it doesn't appear that this will be any more intense than the current use. Parking regulations are regulated the same in the zoning regulations. They are. They're classified the same and the site has plenty of parking. Uh. I don't see any land use issues with this that come up. Um, it's just that the commission needs to determine whether or not they find the use to be as or more appropriate than the existing use.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission tonight? I don't see anyone, so I'll open it up. Up then to commissioners for any questions they have. I'll start with you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for staff, are the parking needs changed?
No, they, no change in parking needs.
And traffic flow, do you, would you anticipate greater traffic or less traffic?
I would anticipate less.
No, please, Mr. Garvey, I don't mean to be, but I was directing these questions toward staff.
Okay, very good, I'm sorry.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Um, I, in my opinion, I think traffic will be in the same or less. You know, medical office has a lot of different appointments during the day. Accounting professional offices generally have less appointments.
Okay, no, I would agree. I just wanted to get your opinion on that. And then as far as intensification, this particular use seems to me to be less than an intensification of a nonconforming use. Are there other uses in that category which might be different that this would also apply to?
Terms of other uses that could be categorized as a professional use?
Yes.
To the switch over? Well, there are, there are some, I mean, generally professional offices are accounting offices. There, you know, real estate offices, legal offices. You know, the intention of the definition in the zoning regulations is to kind of categorize these uses as, you know, in a group that has equal intensity.
Okay, all right, I would, I, from the list that you've mentioned and from what I know of it, it sounds like that's the case. And then the only other question that I had were notices sent to butters or to people in the area because I know that there was when the school across the street, there was a woman who lived behind it who had some issues with some things. Steenberg, I think her name was, if my notes are correct here. And I'm just wondering if she got a letter or if other people in that neighborhood got a letter.
Sure, yeah, I did forget to mention the mailings were in order. I do not think that resident you just mentioned was in the radius.
Okay.
But, but all, all property owners within the, within the radius were notified.
I think her issues were more directly related to the fencing and the lighting at the school, but I just wanted to see, there aren't very many residences that would have been sent notices than I would imagine.
No, I think there were maybe, well, residences, probably less than six.
Yeah, that's would be my greatest concern. Okay, that's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. I see that Barbara is in attendance now.
Yes.
Were you here for the applicant's presentation or?
Yes.
Hmm?
Yes, I was.
So I'll, I'll sit you then for your regular position and then instead, instead of Kevin football.
Oh. I didn't realize I was late.
Were you?
That late. I didn't realize I was that late.
Yeah, well, when we took attendance. So then, since you're here, why don't I proceed to your input, Barbara?
If you, I, yes, I drive by that location at least once a day. I have always been concerned about the traffic in the sightlines for the people that do go to that office building coming out onto Sandy Hollow. It's a bad sightline. Particularly when the traffic is coming and you've got the Baker Center on the south side. I think that's a concern. However, I do think this is a very good use of that property and I'm not opposed to that at all. I think it's, it's an excellent solution for the use of that building. I just, I wish that there was a way to improve the sightline for the traffic coming out of that facility. That's it.
Okay. How's odd? You have any comments?
I don't have any concerns. I kind of agree. I think this is as good a business as any to be there. It is better, though it's zone residential, I think it'd be a worse place to put residential considering it's a budding busiest road we have in the area and a bad intersection in the highway. So I think it's just fine. I do agree that I wish we could do something better with the with sightlines in the driveway, but that's, they're existing right now and when we tackle that, we will. So I'm fine with what they've got.
Okay, so Sutherland, do you have?
No, I'm fine, I'm fine with the project, thank you.
Okay, Kevin, do you have any concerns or questions?
Um, I don't, Jeff. I see it as a nonconforming to nonconforming with a less invasive as the staff has detailed here. So I think it's actually a positive and it just makes that building that much more attractive for a Groton commercial site and therefore it's a very favorable application.
Okay. And I have no, no questions that haven't been addressed. Has everybody had a chance to look at the proposed motion?
Yes.
Does anyone have any concerns with it?
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, you would, you would make the motion later on in the meeting. This would just be the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Enter change motion.
Make sure that that we don't have any concerns with that. Okay. Then if there are no other questions, I'll move to close the public hearing for second. Sit, S I T 371, it's moved and seconded. So anyone have any concerns, questions? So a vote on closing the public hearing, which means we cannot get any more input. So vote on the, on the motion to close it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. So move on to our second public hearing, which is regular 20 dash 01, section 51 dash 1E, extension of temporary certificates for outdoor dining. I guess since we've already read the public hearing notice, we can proceed to since the staff is, the applicant has staff input.
Thank you, that's, that's right. This is a staff initiated text amendment to extend the temporary approvals for outdoor dining to December 1 of this year, 2020. These temporary approvals were allowed by executive order. They're meant to be temporary for an expansion of outdoor seating. And they were originally designed to expire on September 9 tomorrow. The governor recently extended the expiration date to November 12 for these outdoor dining facilities. And I think you guys are probably aware that his emergency powers have recently been extended to March of 2021. Or no word yet on whether or not he's going to further extend these outdoor, these temporary outdoor dining facilities. So 14 restaurants in town have been approved for temporary outdoor, mostly in their parking lots or on sidewalks. All of them received notice of this hearing tonight and included in your packet were some of the comments that we received. Restaurant 99 was interested in having this extension go to January 1. Harp and Hound and Manana both noted that they felt that this crisis is going to go on for a while and had hoped that the extension could go on for a good deal longer, possibly, possibly maybe even, sorry, something going on here. Maybe even a year. I don't think that's, that's a good idea, but since we don't know exactly where the governor is going to go with, with his executive orders and if they're going to be extended any further. So that, those are the only comments that I have received in writing. It does not appear that we have anybody else who's interested, any other attendees. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Does anyone in the public want to address the commission on on this item that is in attendance tonight? I guess I don't see anybody, so. So I'll open it up to commissioners for for comment.
Should we be closing the hearing first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We can still talk to, we can still talk to staff.
On the Zoom.
We can still talk to staff, so.
It's probably best if you've got questions to get them answered during the hearing.
I want to, I think we should go through, open the public hearing. Commissioners, if they have any questions or concerns, because then we can accept new input. So I'll start with you, Mike.
Uh, I really don't have a lot of questions. It seems like this is something that we need to do. And it just sounds to me like it's how long we extended at this point. Going to January seems like a good idea. Some people are asking for a year. But I think that it's probably, I don't know how well it'll work in the dead of winter, but but I don't know how, if that would benefit restaurants, if they had a longer period of time to allow them to plan for this kind of dining. And even if we get through this thing or when we do, that it isn't a benefit to the restaurants to have a little extra capacity to maybe they can make up some of the lost business that they've had. I'm certainly in favor of one year. I would be in favor of longer than that if other people thought it was beneficial to the town and to these restaurants. That's all. I guess that wasn't a question.
Well, it may be.
Question to all of you.
No, but I meant as far as the advertisement versus making a change to the time period. I don't know. We're allowed to make that change.
I, I think I would be comfortable going to January 1. I don't think I'd be comfortable going for a full.
No, I didn't mean that part. But there's no, no problem with making the change in a motion that approved it. I mean, it doesn't invalidate the ad.
Right, that's right.
Application is what I was, I was driving ahead, not whether we want to or not to. Okay. All right, so we can leave that to open discussion when it comes time to the motion and. Okay, Hal, do you have any comments or concerns?
Yeah, I guess the question is, which I could have asked later, but ask now is that, is there, do we have any facts or figures about how much parking needs diminish over time? Because naturally, as the winter sets in, COVID or not, there's, I would imagine it'd be less and less parking requirement. I'm saying that because maybe just letting it go to December 1 is completely, to December 1 or January 1 is absolutely harmless because there's, it won't be in anybody's way. I'm not comfortable with going into the summer. It'll be a new question, but going forward, if we have any facts or figures about what the parking loading typically is in November and December, and if it's low, then maybe we really don't care if it's, if we've got tables sitting where parking should be.
Well, hmm? They don't sit in the parking area yet.
Well, some, some places we are taking up parking spaces.
Yeah.
And is, and is, for instance, 99th parking lot's still full in December. I don't know if I've ever seen 99th parking lot full, so I don't know if that matters. And certainly, if it, in fact, it is always the same, maybe it really doesn't matter and we shouldn't worry about it. I just saw, I wonder if we actually have some background for that. That's kind of a question for staff.
I don't have any background as to whether or not the parking, the parking load diminishes in the wintertime. I think this works right now because of the limits on indoor seating. So that in itself lessens the parking load and sort of frees up some area outside.
If the governor decides to go 75% interior or 100% interior, then that balance changes. So right now, I think it's 50% interior is allowed.
Right, that's right.
So would there be any way to link this to the permission for indoor seating? Because that will, as you say, be the thing that changes it. So long as you can't seat inside or 75% max, then you don't need as many parking spaces. Then you can sit outside. And that, that's actually the thing, not the date, not the weather, it's how many people can you sit inside? That would go again to rewording.
I guess so.
Or approval is, maybe that's, maybe that's.
Not necessarily for the public hearing, unless you feel we do. Well, that would be part of the debate for, on the motion.
And, and that, that's not what the restaurants had heard what this, this amendment was going to do.
Okay.
Yeah, it's real bad. Okay, they don't want to serve outside unless they, in the wintertime, because they have to. Okay, anything else, Hal?
No.
Barbara?
Um, I'm agreeing with, with this. I would like to extend it to January 1st. I think with all of the facilities, even now, you can see that they have the heaters outside. We've had some warm Decembers and I think it would be appropriate to extend it to January 1st.
Okay. So Sutherland.
Yeah, no, I agree with what Barbara's saying and I think it's the right thing to do, extend it to at least January 1st. And there's something almost pleasant about being outside in winter sometimes, especially with one of those heaters going. I fully, I support this, thank you.
Okay, Kevin, do you have any input?
I do, so. So if we extend it to January 1st, the next time we'd vote on this to potentially extend it further would be our December PCC meeting, correct?
That would be the next opportunity. It would be another text amendment, though.
Right, but there's no real issue with another text amendment, or is there?
No, it's just a matter of preparing it. And, and there's nothing to say that if the governor decides to go ahead and extend all of these things until the end of his executive power or his emergency powers, then it's good until March.
Right, so the alignment to me as far as is good, is good. And therefore, I believe that moving into January 1st just kind of eases the pain. It doesn't create another short term, you know, potential text that we'd, we'd have to change. So I like the January 1st date for that, for that reason. That's it.
I guess I have no, no concerns with the proposal, except for maybe the date and a slight problem with a couple of the wording issues on the proposed motion. So does anyone have any other concerns for the public hearing?
One, one other issue that I just wanted to bring up, and Kevin reminded me of this in his comments. I believe we only have one meeting in December, so if we were going to do this, we'd have to do it closer to the beginning of December rather than, we're not going to have the last, the end of December to make a decision like this.
Without a special meeting, right?
Yeah. So just everyone keep that in mind that we're making, if it needs to be extended, it'll be for the beginning of December if we have to do that.
Yeah. So then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for extension of the temporary certificates for outdoor dining. Is there a second?
Got.
You second it, Barbara?
Yes.
Excuse me, there appears to be an attendee. You might want to see if someone needs to speak. They just showed up.
Oh, did they?
They did, before you closed the hearing.
Okay, I don't know who that, hmm?
No, if there's, if there's someone who wants to speak to the commission.
Who's to address the commission on this item?
And you'd need to raise your hand in order to be recognized.
I don't see anybody with a hand raised. Hmm? I only see one other person who was here for the other public hearing too. Okay, so then.
You want to just promote them, Deb, and see?
Sure, I'm do allowed to talk. Yep.
Oh, okay.
There we go, in case they want to address the commission.
I don't hear any. So then we'll vote on the motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? So let me. The public hearing is closed for the certificates of outdoor dining. Moving on, we have consideration of public hearings. First one is Andy Hollow Professional Offices. We do have a proposed motion. Does any, this is one.
And I can put it up on the screen here, so if everyone can see it.
I just, I order. Well, everybody has a copy of it or? Too many files. Does anyone have any concerns with this, and I saw, does the applicant have any, has he's been forwarded this? Motion?
I have no concerns.
He has no concerns, okay. Does anyone on the commission have any concerns with the motion or wish to discuss it further? If not, I'll make, I'll make a motion then. To approve special permit three seventy one, two hundred Sandy Hollow Road to. Change the first floor plan or upper level office from one non-conforming use. Parent medical office and apparent to another non-conforming use parent professional office and of. Param subject to the following conditions. One, no more than one professional office will be permitted, and there shall be no more. Than a total of two offices in the building. Findings and reasoning for approval, the commission finds that this application complies. With a special permit criterion section nine point four dash six of the zoning regulations. Because the use is scaled for the location, does not alter the essential characteristics of the area. And has adequate parking and access. The commission also finds that this application complies with the requirements of section nine point seven dash. Four point B, in that the proposed professional accounting office use will have fewer customers. In less vehicular traffic per day than the previous medical office use. And that the required parking and loading spaces will not increase. Is there a second?
Second.
Who's second? Does anyone have any? Concerns or discussion regarding the motion?
Uh, yes.
Yes, Barbara.
I I reiterated what I said before, I am still concerned with the sightline of when the uh. Cars are exiting the parking lot and um. I don't know how to. Sort of fix that situation, um, other than asking that the the applicants perhaps. At down trees that are blocking the the sightline. Um, I I don't know what the solution is, but um, as someone who travels that almost every day. I think that's an issue that that needs to be solved.
I don't know how we solve it.
I don't either.
Well, I mean, it exists today, so, I mean, it's existed since nineteen sixty, whatever it was, five or. Unless the trees grow. If that's the issue, I don't know. Does anyone else have any other concerns?
I, I uh. Have one concern, where it, where it reads number one, no more than one professional office will be permitted. And there shall be no more than a total of two offices in the building, can we make that sentence a little clearer? When I read it the first time, I just wasn't. No more than one per, will be permitted where? And I believe it's on the, and and. It just doesn't, it it doesn't read perfectly clear to me.
Have to make an amendment, I guess, to the motion. I think that, what if we inserted no more than one professional? Office on the first floor will be permitted.
That's, that would make it much clearer to me.
I I would suggest upper level office, not first floor.
Okay, well, I was just using it because the first floor.
I think Barbara's correct.
You wanna say upper level office, that's fine, I don't care.
Well, it's just the way it's written.
Oh, no, I understand, it says. Our plan or upper level office in the basic motion.
And then as far as Barbara's concerns go, wouldn't we need some sort of a site plan or, and that's a scenic highway, it seems like it would be difficult to do it.
And that's not what we're doing here.
Well, it's difficult to do it at this, with this application.
Right, because all it is is use.
I mean, it, I don't even know what they're permitted to do, pr- pruning trees or. Tree removal, or if they're even allowed to do those kinds of things.
Oh, it's because it's one of those fancy.
Road, yeah.
It's a scenic road. Allegedly a scenic red.
Okay, so we, then we, we want to amend. This motion to insert upper level. Uh, or insert on, I guess, no more than one professional office on the upper level. Insert that after professional office.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I, can I just make a quick point here, this is Bruce Loffren, planning and development services.
Yes, Bruce.
Um, so I I I just wanted to mention that the, the. I I don't disagree that that could, should be reworded, but I just want to make the point that um. The the intention of that was to state that um. The building can only have one professional office within the entirety of the building. So then, um, because we're only changing one non-conforming use. To another non-conforming use, the medical offices remaining. Oh, I I don't know if you'd wanted to make it be clear that, you know, it, you're not allowing. Inchangeability between professional and medical offices.
Oh. You're, because of the distinction between medical offices and professional offices.
Correct, so, so you could say no more than one professional office will be permitted in the building. Period and or period and um. There shall be no more than two offices, you could have two conditions or just make that two sentences. Just just a suggestion, I just wanted to point that out.
Well, yeah, but if we put.
I kind of disagree with that because there's, that would preclude the themes I center from. Changing to a professional office.
That's what it says, yes. It would require another special permit. The way this is worded.
Yeah, they could change spaces, they could go from the first floor to the second floor, essentially, right?
Yeah, I I wouldn't see a problem with that in terms of zoning, just to have um. Professional office go from the first floor to the second floor, but. I think two professional offices would probably, which. Would require another special.
Are we saying that if things. My doctors moves out, then the one professional office could expand to the entire building though, right? Now it'd still be one office, it would just be the whole, the whole building. It's probably not the intent, but I think that's kind of what it says.
That's right.
And I don't know if I have a problem with it, just, I think that's what it says. That would preclude having a collection of professional offices, you just have one, one big one.
All we're saying is you could just, yeah, you could only have one. Professional office and one medical office in the building, or you could eliminate one or the other.
Right.
Maybe, I disagree with that, I think you could, you could eventually have two professional offices.
Well, would require another special, another hearing and a special permit. The way this is worded. Is it, I mean.
I think the condition maybe confuses everybody, you might just say to approve the special permit. To only change the first floor plan or upper level office from one non-conforming use. Medical office to another non-conforming use professional office and forget the condition.
Yeah, that would also work, just end it there.
Yeah, yeah, we don't need that, you mean, just delete that.
Right, and then to, to add to only change the first floor plan or upper level office. And then just leave it at that.
Yeah, I would agree.
Explanatory the way it is, without that condition, right?
Right, I like it without the condition.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the condition opens us up to a lot of, lot more uh.
Questions, yes. So then I'll make, revise my proposed amendment to delete condition number one. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Moved in second, so and then the motion will just read that first three line. Entry with, with the findings.
Do you want to add the word only, to change only the first floor?
No, it says, it's all it says, it says to approve, to change the first floor plan.
Okay.
So I, to me, that's all it is. I don't think you have to put only in.
Okay.
The fact that identifies it as the first floor plan or upper level office is pretty specific.
So what we're, what I'm looking at here is that the new amendment will, will end at the parents.
In change, after conditions, it would be period instead of a colon.
No, 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 subject to the following conditions. Period after professional office, period.
That's what I, that's what I think it should, that's how I feel it should read, end it there.
Right. Yeah, it's just the first part, right?
Okay.
That's.
That's fine by me.
So you want me to reread the motion?
Good idea.
I mean, you might want to read it.
I'll re- reread the motion, just to be safe. To approve, motion is to approve special permit number three seventy one, comma, two hundred Sandy Hollow Road. Comma. To change the first floor plan or upper level office. From one non-conforming use parent medical office to another non-conforming use parent. Professional office, period, then we go to findings and reasons for approval. That's what we have right now, everybody's happy with that. So we'll vote, vote on the amendment first to delete the. The qualifying statement, number one, is everybody in favor of that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion is carried unanimously. And then we vote on the, the motion as I previously read. And including the findings and reasons for approval, vote on with no. Qualifying statement. So all those in favor of that, say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion is carried unanimously. That's a lot, a lot of accounting for this one. Okay, next uh. Item is uh. Consideration of public hearing rega twenty dash oh one. Extension of temporary certificates for outdoor dining. Have a proposed motion, does anyone have any concerns?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and put it up on the screen, Jeff. Or maybe I'm not, Bruce, do you have it, mine disappeared.
Well, I can read it. Before making the motion, I can read it.
Thank you.
Sandy Hollow Road.
That's not it.
Nope.
There you go.
No, there we go, so, be- before you start, Jeff, I just wanted to say this was a bit of a moving target, you know, things kept. Kept happening um up at the governor's office, so we tried to amend the motion to. Make it fit with whatever the last thing out of his office was.
Yeah, well, that's what I figured. Because it's, it's too close to that, and as. As long as it doesn't conflict with that. And we have had some concern over the ending date. Just whether it's December one or January one, if we get much later than that, we get into snow plowing season. That could be a big issue. If it's into, you know, mid-winter. So that's all, so that's different than. So all we're really doing is extending. The current rules. That's what we're saying.
Extending it to whatever date you choose or until the expiration of the executive orders.
Right. We're not changing the current rules, we're just, all we're doing is addressing the date here.
That's right.
And hearing from several of the commissioners that recommend that January one. Is that what the consensus is to go to January first?
I agree with that.
I agree.
I wouldn't want to go any further than that because. I think, once we get into snow, snow season, if we ever have one, could be an issue. Anyone has any concerns and I'll make a motion to approve. Rega twenty dash oh one, section five point one dash one point E, outdoor dining commercial. With the following modifications. Modifications underlined in red, any outdoor. Well, does that go into the motion, the modifications on?
No, it shouldn't, it shouldn't.
Couldn't go, just modifications, colon.
Right.
Any, it shouldn't, any, otherwise we'd have to have the motion in color. Any outdoor patio approved under the temporary certificate for outdoor dining, parent T C O D. And apparent process established pursuant to the twenty twenty gubernatorial. Executive Order seven M M, which has not been the subject of a zoning enforcement. Action or nuisance complaint shall be permitted to operate until January one, twenty twenty one. Or until the expiration of executive orders seven M M or seven thousand as amended. This extension shall not be interpreted to create any non-conforming right. And the continued operation of the outdoor patio. Approved under the T C O D process is allowed by all. Executive orders shall be deemed to be a complete and total waiver of any claim of non. Conforming rights under any local, state, or federal legal authority. In approving this zoning regulation amendment, the Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the amendment is consistent. With the twenty sixteen Plan of Conservation and Development, is there a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any concerns with the motion?
I just want to mention, Mr. Chairman, that I, I believe it's seven M M or the way it's written here, seven O O O.
That's correct.
It's not, it's not seven thousand, it's seven O O O.
Oh, it's O's, oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'll change that. You're right. So I'll correct that. Then, if there's no other uh. Concerns, we'll vote on, on the motion for extending outdoor dining, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? I mean, any opposed, any abstentions, motion is carried unanimously. One thing I noticed, Deb, on the uh, the rules require fencing around the tables. When you walk downtown Mystic, several of the restaurants don't have any barrier outside. I, you might want to have somebody take a look at that, I would think even if you just put a stanchion. You might want to have somebody take a look at that. I would think even if you just put a stanchion. Two stanchions up in a rope between. Stanchions where the table ends is probably a good idea because it gives you some.
Yeah.
Barriers to.
I I will. Downtown Mystic is controlled more by the state of Connecticut since the sidewalks belong to DOT. But we'll have somebody come to go take a look.
They have to follow our rules.
Oh, they do. They have to follow DOT rules too. They had to get both approvals down there.
Well, yeah, but they're not. They're not putting the the border up.
And I think that is something the state required. So, yeah.
Oh, it is. It's a state requirement. I thought it was ours.
Yep.
But it is a good idea, I think. There's still a lot of outdoor dining. Maybe it will end now that. The summer is over. Tourist summer, that is. Okay, next item is approval of minutes of previous meetings. Will entertain a motion for approval of the August eleventh.
I would make a motion to approve the minute minutes of August eleventh, twenty twenty.
So a second?
Second.
Anyone have any corrections? To the minutes? Just said one. Item under members present. And we split that out to identify. The alternates separate from members. Since that determines two votes. If there are no other concerns, we'll vote on on the motion to approve the minutes of April eleventh. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Next is public communications. Anyone on the commission have any communications? The staff have any? Communications to bring forth? Is anyone in? Anyone in the public wish to address the commission tonight? I don't hear anybody. Nobody's raised their hand in the. Public, I guess. Okay, special permits. We have none in sub divisions, none site plans, none. All business. We have a conservation commission draft open space plan. I think comments are due the end of the month. I don't know if people have had a chance to review that or have any concerns with it.
Yes and yes.
Yes, go ahead, Sue.
Oh, they're lengthy. It may be better. I don't know how you want us to do this.
I don't know either. I think it's best to send it out to a California fire to start over. I don't know what other people's thoughts are. They had a real chance to look at it.
I thought it was too long. That was one general comment. It'd be nice to be a little more succinct. I think it keeps people's interest and. It's possible to do that, I think.
No, I agree. It is too long. I felt that. Wasn't very. Rational and their approach to things. And was. And was miss. It really didn't have a good description of what their objectives are or realistic objectives. Or how do you? Why do you monitor? Monitor clear cutting. It doesn't do anything to watch it happen. You know, I don't know what the real objective of this thing is. I guess so. We try to get written comments in by next time.
That that would be good. The staff is still reviewing it as well. We're doing. We're doing a more technical review of the mapping and consistency with the P O C D. So, yeah, if you can get us your comments, you know, in the next week or so, maybe we can compile them all for the next meeting.
I just get frustrated when I for the first few pages.
Was staff involved in the writing of this document?
No.
Staff? You were not?
No.
Oh, I I I staffed the commission, but this is the conservation commission plan.
Okay.
They must have nothing to do.
Well, there's a, I mean, to me, it seemed like there's some things that they're. Man, and I can make comments, but it seems like. They're sort of giving us a roadmap, I would say. I mean, it's a long winded roadmap, but it's, you know, where we've been, where we're headed. And it does identify neighborhoods and. Certain areas of town that are going to be affected. By sea rise, the airport in particular. My neighborhood where I live, Willow Point, number of others. And we're getting to a point in time where twenty fifty. I I still might be around. So. And certainly my family. And I just, I think that these things need to be addressed, but. Having the document a little more concise might make it more readable. But I think we do need some sort of a roadmap. That identifies these places and that. Puts everybody on the same page.
Oh, I think you're right. I think it's an important document. It's just the way. It's worded and it gets confusing and very wordy. And it doesn't understand how things get done.
Yeah, well. No, no, I would agree with you.
A lot of the things they want to do require legislation. To make it happen. And they don't address that at all. So why don't we try to get comments in? Before our next meeting. Because it is a long, long document. Okay.
And then those comments are due on the thirtieth, correct?
I believe that's what we had. In our last month.
Yeah, it's it's the end of the month. So what what I'm doing for them, helping to kind of get plan out, facilitate all the comments and. Going to provide them all that so the conservation commission could discuss it at their October meeting, which is the first week in October. So I don't know how you want to handle the comments if each individual member wants to email me some, and then I can compile it. I I can put it in a packet of all the comments I received, or you just want to kind of draft up the comments at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think there's so much to handle. And I mean, can we just do it individually and just say these are? Comments from individual members.
You could. You could certainly do it that way.
Rather than having the commission spending a whole day trying to figure out what comments they want to do as.
I mean, yeah, that that's definitely an option if you think it'd be easier to do it that way.
I think so.
I mean, we might be able to find some consensus among our comments that would. Offer some sort of a more united sort of.
Yeah, we could. Summary, maybe, or something like that.
Yeah.
If we could have those off for. The total commission reviews. Everybody gets their individual comments in. If Bruce could put them in a package, send them out, and then maybe. He could look at in that light to have a commission. Viewpoint with specific items separate. Does that make sense to people?
Yep.
Would to me.
Yeah, that way everybody can make their own. We might get a lot more points out that way. Because they're going to have to review them and consider what to do. All right. So why don't we work it like that? Get our comments into Bruce? And then we can get them out. And then have a cover, like a cover letter or something.
I think that that's that would seem like a.
That would be something we could do as a commission.
Yeah.
And then all the individual commissioners, if they have any concerns. Can address them separately. Okay. So are with you, Bruce?
Yeah, yeah, it's fine. I'll compile whatever comments I I get and. Yeah, I'll I'll take a shot at putting them all together and put a draft in the in. Next meeting packet and and discuss add, delete, whatever you want to at the meeting.
Yeah, well, I don't think we want to go over everybody's comments individually.
Yeah, what I would suggest Bruce Bruce maybe this is Kevin is just put everyone's comments verbatim, you know, in the package. And then put a one page summation on it that makes friends, right? You made some friends. Here's some negativity. Here's the talk about length. Please consider this, but one page that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. We'd have like a cover letter.
Right.
Yeah.
It would be probably good if everybody could put their comments in Microsoft Word or something equivalent to that, so. Can easily be handled.
Or you can just email.
That's fine.
In an email, he whatever, however you want to do it, and I'll compile it as Kevin suggested.
I can type in Word better than I can. Email, you can't form it. Word, you can put it in a table or something. Makes it a lot easier, at least for me. Okay, moving on then to new business. We have new applications. Do we have any? New applications?
Excuse me, we have one Gerard Nissan facility up on Route one eighty four. Site plan for that in addition.
Okay, and referrals. We have town of Stonington referral zoning regulation. For public hearing on retaining walls. Staff have any input on that?
Well, the the hearing was September one, but excuse me, we included it because we see issues. With retaining walls on property lines as well. And so. We thought you might want to see this anyway, even though it's past the commenting date. I think. We had mentioned that we are starting to prepare some zoning text amendments to address. Issues that we found, and this may find its way into that that package.
Okay. So we may have something. I assume nobody has any concerns with. The change on Stonington side doesn't impact the community. Does anyone have any other input on that? Okay, moving on into Lanfair Estates, Lanfair Road. Exploration of subdivision, set public hearing date. You want to. Want to set the date for that?
Yeah, if you could set it for for the next meeting, September twenty two would be good.
All right. Set the date for September twenty second. Commission reports, reported chair. The only thing is I have was I sign the plan for. Off since our last meeting for. Number thirteen Fort Hill Road. I'm sure where the condominiums are apartments. That's all I had. Report a commission. Does anyone on the commission have anything? To report?
I I would just like an update on what's happening with the Spicer Mansion.
Okay. Um, as of right now, I I don't have an update, but I'll see if we can get you one for the next time. We haven't had any complaints. How's that?
People have given up.
They thought it was going to court.
Yeah, I thought it was going to court.
And court has been closed, so I'll get you an update.
That's why.
Yeah, they're starting to do Zoom hearings now, so I don't know where it is on the docket.
So there hasn't been any change then.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a few.
Yes.
Issues or questions, I guess, for staff. Do we have a timeline as to how long? These kinds of meetings will continue or. Even like an inkling. Zoom meetings, I mean.
Well, with the expansion of the emergency powers, I think they will continue through March.
Okay.
Because that was that was part of it, not the ability not to meet in person.
Okay, so this is my concern that I've sort of noticed with the meetings is that. And and it's just a matter of how we handle the voting, I think. I don't know as if we should be raising hands when we vote, but sometimes I think the voices get lost or. Or if someone gets up and and leaves, you know, they exit quickly to. Go into another room in their house. You don't always know if that person's there and you hear voices, but you don't hear all of them. I think sometimes.
Well, all we have, yeah, I just.
Well, I would just. I'm just suggesting these things that that for voting, maybe we would raise hands. I don't know if that's necessary, but.
Have five, five people. So when we take. The minority votes, you know, like somebody is voting against something or. And the majority is for it. You have to record that or abstentions. I we just have to assume it just like a a meeting that we hold in person. I mean, we don't.
Yeah, I suppose it's just that, like if I got up and. Went to use the bathroom, for instance, you you would know that I left the room in our meeting.
You should announce. You should announce that.
Okay, all right, just like anything else. All right.
Well, we should because we may want to stop the meeting in that case. Because there could be some discussion that you should be hearing.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make it. You know, I would hate to see someone come. You know, when Barbara came in, I hadn't seen her picture, and then it was like.
I didn't either.
There she is, you know, and I know there was a meeting that I came to a little late. And I had been watching, but I wasn't acknowledged or it wasn't noticed till afterwards.
Yeah.
And so and then I wanted to also because Deb had alluded to the. Zoning regulation update as to where we are with that and how. Long before we would expect to see those kinds of things. Coming on. And then I had one more thing that I think that maybe we should think about. Which are electric charging stations at. We've had recently two apartment. Approvals. The behind the zoo and the other one in downtown Mystic. And my concern is that we have electric vehicles coming online. And we have a commercial apartment buildings being converted and that. Perhaps thinking about electric vehicle charging stations at these places might be something that we would. Wish for.
That's interesting.
Vehicles, bicycles, scooters, other means of transportation that people use. You know, even if it's just an electrical outlet that they can plug into outside for the smaller things. But I know that cars are going to require some sort of infrastructure that's. Needed. It could be something that would be attractive to a land to a, you know, a landlord or someone who's renting the building. And and it would be, you know, a way to attract people who have those kinds of vehicles to downtown, which tend to be small. There's something I think that maybe as a commission we should think about.
You mean to change the zoning regulations?
Well, to require them for commercial, you know, and it could be for a certain number of apartments. That 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 facility is in place for, you know, and you could, I don't know, you know, we could decide on. How many of these spaces per? Unit, just like we do parking spaces.
Right.
I don't think that these vehicles are going to come about if the infrastructure isn't in place.
That's a good idea.
Could staff take a look at that?
Absolutely.
What other communities are are doing for, I guess it would be new construction or changes.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. That's it.
For the amount of money they charge for the Mystic Art Association.
You can charge for those things, you know.
Give them a free charge. That's expensive, a rates they charge. Okay. Does anyone have anything else? Does staff have any report of staff? You have anything else to add, Deb?
I I don't. I I'm hoping we'll have a discussion on what we're thinking about for zoning amendments in October. Well, before we submit applications, just to get your input.
It'd be good if we can, yeah, get our input first before we.
Yes.
Open them up to the public. We should have. What's going on with those? Does that include the oral school or is that?
No, no, no. No, this this will be.
Never Neverland.
Yeah.
Well, maybe. I mean, it's I wonder how realistic it is.